Okay. Mr. Treasurer, are you ready? Good morning, I'd like to call our special meeting to order and ask the Treasurer to call the roll.
President Baker.
President.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Vice President Cole.
Present.
Ms. Gibbs.
Here.
Ms. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Pready.
Here.
Ms. Reyes.
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, and now I'm going to ask a special guest to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. His name is Gregory Perryman. He is Vice President Cole's nephew. He is from Beechwood Middle School. He's the president of student council there. He's in the eighth grade. Welcome, Mr. Perryman. Please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Perryman. We appreciate you being here this morning. And let's move on to item two. So, the special meeting was called for one reason, and that is to discuss the superintendent search. And so at this time, I'd like to call upon Board Member Hudson to offer a resolution.
Thank you, President Baker. At our meeting last week, we had requested the board consider a resolution to halt the current superintendent search and start a new search due to concerns with open meetings, laws, violations. We have a streamlined resolution here that is in front of you, and, Mr. Treasurer, I'll provide you with these copies so they can be distributed. So, the resolution would terminate the current search. It would request that we, that the board retain a non-voting mediator knowledgeable in dispute resolution and the sunshine laws to work with the board to conduct a new search. And that person would, the mediator would kind of be our point person, the board's point person, to help scheduling and coordination, work with the search firm bidding, would coordinate everything for, with us, and work with us to gain consensus. The board would retain independent legal counsel to advise us on all aspects of compliance regarding this search. The resolution calls for us to retain an executive search firm to serve as a consultant for the search, instructing the search firm that they would work through the medi, with us through the mediator. We start the search immediately. We'd start the search next Tuesday, conclude our efforts by the end of the school year, June 30, 2018. So, I would move that the board consider and approve this resolution.
Moved and seconded, okay. I think Mr. Pready was first.
By a no's.
Yes, by a no's, that's right. All right. Colleagues, discussion on the resolution we have before us.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Mr. Vice President.
And I want to preface this with concern about timing. So, in the section that reads "resolved," the board will begin new search no later than April 3, 2018, and will use its best efforts to conclude the new search no later than June 30. I just, as I said before in our previous meeting, when this resolution was presented, that I had ti, that I had issue with what I thought was impracticality and timing. I think that we should remove the time piece to just read "Resolved" that the board will instruct the search firm, that the mediator will serve as his point of contact to the search firm for all services associated with the new search. I agree with stopping the search, and had no problem with that the previous meeting. But my biggest concern on this resolution is timing. It took us six months, six months, to get down to what were two finalists. And I think that we need to do our district and this board the proper justice of giving ourselves due time to find the talent, to find the research, to find the resources that we're looking for and need to conduct a proper search. And I think that is troublesome with this timeline.
So, Mr. Vice President, is your, the amendment you're offering, does it remove the fifth resolved clause?
Yes, it is to strike the fifth resolve.
Okay.
Sorry, I'd just to clarify. It removes entirely the last paragraph, or does it just remove the words "no later than June 30"?
It re, it, with the resolve, the board will begin the new search. So, it relea, it removes, it strikes "no later than April 3, 2018."
Oh, okay.
And we use its best efforts. So, thank you for that point of clarification.
Okay, so your amendment that you're offering removes that resolved clause in its entirety?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Moved and seconded, okay. Let's have discussion on-
The resolved clause. Not in its entirety.
No.
The board will begin the new search, but we, I'm asking to strike "no later than moving forward." So, we're saying that we agree that we'll do, we'll convene a new search. But the timeline that's outlined, I think is just not practical for what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
And I like to strike that language.
Okay, I'm just, I'm seeking clarification, so you might-
Thank you, sir.
It might say "resolved," the board will begin a new search.
Yes, sir.
That's, okay.
Period.
Period. Okay, and you, you are still a second to that?
Well, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted clarification, and I wanted to hear what it was.
Mr. Brown, your hand was up first.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Cole and, and board, I understand, I understand the desire, you know, not to set a firm end date. However, one of the major problems that we had in this past search was that we took way too long. A number of candidates, and I have this on very reliable information, bailed out because time was dragging. They couldn't put their lives on hold for as long as it took for us to get to, or even close, to completion. Several of those people had applied at the outset last fall, and month after month after month went by, and they needed to make plans and move on with their lives, and they couldn't wait that long. So, I think that it is essential that we do put a target date by which we would like to include. Obviously, that date would not be set in stone. It's aspirational, but I think it's important that we have a date, that we plan to get this completed, that we make sure with all of these folks, the search firm in particular, that we can achieve a good quality pool of candidates over that period of time and accomplish what's needed. But having this open-ended will only lead to some of the same problems that we encountered the first time around. In terms of a start date, I'm not sure I understand what the problem is with starting ASAP. That does not necessarily mean that notices, or advertising, or postings will be placed by that date, but it means that we want to get to work and get people in place and get started as quickly as we possibly can. So, and those are my thoughts. Thank you. Mr. Pready?
I would echo Mr. Brown's comments. Also, our first part of the process of this, literally from September through December, was setting the scaffolding, going to community conversations, so it wasn't a six-months process. We started in January when it came to actual interviews, and all, and things fell apart in February. So, I, I think that we should, we have plenty of time. You know, we just need to take the steps. I think we should have a start date, and this is a permissive date at the end. It says, "used by its best efforts," by the end of June. I, I think that's okay. That gives us three solid months to get on this. We shouldn't have any unknowns in this process whatsoever. We did ness, we did start the interview process in January. Yes, we're going to have to sacrifice some more time and condense it, but, you know, I, I think three months, all of April, May, and June, is ample time for us to really get on this and to get, to get this going. We didn't do any interviews in September, October, November, December. We hired the consultant, and we had community meetings and had surveys out. I don't see any reason why we can't use that same information moving forward. We, you know, we have a lot of good valuable information from the public. Let's use that, but we have to, for ourself as a body and for the community, have some set dates in here so we can benchmark ourself and have some goals to try to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pready. Ms. Hudson, is your hand up? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it has, thank you. Again, I, I was hoping we could discuss the entirety of the resolution first before beginning to talk about the end. That said, I think overall, time is of the essence for us, because we are not just starting a new search. We're starting a new search because of the consequences of the flaws in our former, our, our former search process. Those flaws carry forward, and they carry forward, in my belief, in a way that, that could cause harm to the district, because we have, our final candidate continues to be also our interim superintendent. And so I think we really will need advice on how to go forward, because we don't want that void ab initio consequence to affect the district adversely. And likewise, I think for the community, we need to let the community know that we are accountable, that we take this seriously, and that we aren't just playing four corners with the search process to kind of get the result one way that we couldn't get the other way. And so, I, I think for a number of reasons, whether it's about accountability or about the, my concerns on, on the, the legal front, and I would certainly think we could get additional advice on that, but I, I am concerned and believe that we need to stay accountable, and we need to demonstrate in this resolution that time is of the essence. The resolution includes the mediator because, to, to help us stick to our goals, to help us come together, and to help us ta, find that common ground, that I, and, and at least in my mind, I felt like we pulled apart in this process, and, and we can, it isn't about the whys and the wheres, but it's like, let's, how do we get this done? And how do we get this done well, so we come together as a board and do it together? So, I would, I would suggest that we not include that proposed amendment, but keep the resolution in its entirety.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can certainly be amenable to an April 3 start. I think all of us are here in the spirit, very clearly, of wanting to ensure accountability of this board. We started this process with that in mind and that, with that in willful intent. We started this process with that. I think, quite honestly, there is some, and, and I think where a mediator may be able to help in that process, or may not be able to help, because I see it from either sides as well, that there is a when and how in this, if this, this so-called fell apart, there is. And I think it's centered on a person, and a personality, and an idea that this person wouldn't get a fair shake. So, I just want to make sure that moving forward, we are, because I'm concerned as well, that we move forward with all fairness in our process to current employees, and most assuredly, in all fairness and righteousness to our children, and how we're going to move this district to next, academically, how we're going to reconvene our business as a board, and not use this opportunity to be some sort of distraction. So, I, I want to make sure that we're clear about willful intent as we speak about this process. It is not to, for folks to hide things or be non-transparent. I think all of us came to the table, in fact, I know that. All of us came to the table with that in spirit and in mind. So, please, let's, I want to make sure we stay focused on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'll ask my colleagues to limit their comments to the specific amendment that we're considering. Yes, Ms. Gibbs.
Sure. Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for being here to consider the amendment. I, I don't concur with the thought that the reason this search is flawed, or that there are challenges, because we took way too long. The history is that most urban superintendents do not leave in the middle of a school year. It's very rare that superintendents leave in the middle, or it, with a December 31 date. So, as a board, we had a very precarious position of how to start a search after the normal timeframe. The normal timeframe for a search is to start in the fall, and to give consideration to the, to the applicant, to their families, to find a home, to transition their children, for their spouses to find a job, to find childcare, to find transportation, and for them to find their way from the school district back to their house. That takes time. So, I, if there is a, a challenge in our search that started, was that we did have a very aggressive timeline. We are now not in the cycle of when superintendents are moving. Superintendents are finalizing their contracts in March and in April. They are right now, they either decided to leave and they're already in a search, or they're deciding to stay put in their districts. And so, I believe, and to your point of this, I believe the moment we are all in agreement that we're terminating the search, this start, the search starts now. Now, the next steps in it, I think we should talk about and what that looks like, but once we, it, we end it, we are really starting over, and it takes a lot of steps. I think it is best, in terms of this amendment on the table, not to put an artificial timeframe on it for any reason. We put a "come here by January or December." That was the flaw. Now, that, that was a flaw. If we want the best candidates, and we are going to start over, I believe we start over. We don't have to, and to Board Member Pready's point, we already have data and what we're looking for, and what we want the next superintendent to be. But if we're going to have a national search, we need to be in line with national search timeframes. We also know this amendment asks for a, another search firm. If you choose search firm A, and they placed a candidate in a district, they can't go back to that candidate for three to five years. But if we pick search firm B, this candidate can talk to that applicant. So, we need to be even more thoughtful and spend time really learning about who has the limitations and what candidates are available depending on which search firm we use. That is going to take time. Therefore, I believe in a, I believe, I mean, I believe we start right now, so I'm okay with an April 3, but I do not, I, I do not believe we put an end date. I think we need time to look at what we're doing, look at who we want to get, look at the limitations of whoever we're going to onboard for the search firm, and pick our best options there. And don't put ourselves on a deadline that is unreal, and it is not aligned to the national superintendent search that's, that's already established. We want, if we want the best candidates, and I believe everyone at this board wants the best candidate, and I think you're stellar as well, but as we look at everyone, then you have to be in line with a timeframe to get the candidates that align with what we say we want.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Board Member Reyes.
So, President Baker, that is my, my concern. I believe that one of the things that maybe prolonged the search to Board Member Brown's comment is when you have seven board members, and there's board members that are employed, this is, this, that are employed, that means outside of the district, have actual 24/7 jobs, in some cases, in some cases, three or four jobs, it's difficult to get seven board members together to move anything forward. So, when you have a executive search, which is what this is, a CEO search, all members should be present when you're interviewing every viable applicant. The applicant needs to be there, the board members need to be there when you're making arrangements to interview, to discuss, to, to talk to those viable applicants. That's where, a lot of times, that's what takes time. You want to be able to be fair and open with each of those candidates. I believe every board member here knows that I was also concerned with the timing of our search, asking a CEO to come onboard in September, rally the troops, and tell their district, their board, their community, that they're all in with their particular district for the upcoming year, and then have them come and say, "Oh, I'm sorry, November, December, I'm, I'm, I'm applying somewhere else and looking." We need to be fair to these candidates. I, for one, and I, and again, like everyone said, I believe everybody here wants to have the best candidate for this district, not for me, not for individual board members, for this district. We were voted to this position to ensure that we protect this district, to ensure that we get the best viable CEO, executive superintendent, representative of our district to move this district forward in the best capabilities that that person has.
Thank you. Board Member Hudson?
Respectfully, I, first on timing, we were on track to sign in the spring. I mean, that's where we were. But more importantly, we aren't in a vacuum. We're not in a vacuum. I mean, we, we had problems with this first search, and it has put us now behind the eight ball. And so, while, yes, ideally, would be better to go out and, you know, go at a certain time and go to, we have got to now move. And so, we didn't, we had luxuries of time. We, we took a lot of time on this other, on the first search, and to our detriment, in a number of ways. But that doesn't take us off the hook from accountability, and the accountability is now, and again, because of the situation with how the search ended, and our interim, and I think that's a separate topic, but we need to move. I suggest this as a way to, at this date, as a way to hold ourselves accountable, but also for the betterment of the district. I think we are going to find ourselves in a pickle otherwise. And so I think the best thing would be that we push forward, we, we get a mediator, we get our, the search firm bidding out, and we get going on this. Will we have, you know, what kind of candidates? We can, we can debate that all day. We don't know until we try, but I think we need to try. And I think it's, we need to hustle because of the concerns from the prior searches that have been raised. It isn't just about time, it is about the, those issues and concerns with our prior search and the result.
Thank you. Board Member Pready, and then Mr. Brown.
Thank you. You know, I agree, and we, we do all, everyone comes from a good place. And, you know, in the last part of the process, we were, you know, we had two finalists that both dropped out, and then, quite frankly, we got into our camps, and we got in our corners, and anyone that was going to come here absolutely knew where we stood. So, we almost ruined the process for ourselves. You know, we, we created an environment where any potential candidate already knows where you stand for, at, already, and that's on both sides. That, that's not very helpful for the process when you're trying to get good candidates. That's when it slowed down. I mean, that's why David James dropped out. He applied in December, and we dragged him out for three months, and it's okay. And he had his own people lobbying him too. After a while, you're going to have that, and you should expect that. But that is a real issue, you know? There, we created an environment where it was very known where everyone was, and we created an environment where, you know, we kept people on for a very long time. And yes, it is a balance, too, like you said, Board Member Gibbs. You know, you have to go at the right time. You can't go too fast, but you can't go too slow. It's not an exact thing. You know, you want to do what's, what's exactly best for the district. And, and like I said, you know, we just have to, I think we should stick back to the amendment. This is permissive. It starts April 3. It says "our best efforts" by June 30. That doesn't say it has to be done by June 30, but that gives ourselves some goals so that we can hold ourselves accountable. We can all, we're going to have this process with the mediator, with independent legal counsel to help us, guide us along the way. We need to get on it right away. I, we will have success with this. I guarantee we will. But it's also going to enable us to communicate a little bit more better with the public, especially with the mediator. So, you know, if we're going, if it's June 30 or July 17, you know, I mean, at least we have some sort of benchmark. To keep it open-ended, I don't think does a lot of justice, and like I said before, it's permissive. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yes, just very briefly, if I'm hearing all of us correctly, it sounds as though there really isn't any disagreement with respect to getting started right away, and that that April 3 date more sooner is, is, is fine. The question is with respect to setting an end date. My suggestion, and I can make a motion if that's helpful, is to just set that particular question of setting an end date aside, and let's get at the main motion. You know, the idea being, let's take action to terminate the search. It sounds as though there's no longer much disagreement there. Let's proceed with the mediator. I think that we all know- I think that we all know the difficulties and the impasse that we had gotten to. Um, this is not going to be anybody who makes decisions, but this is going to be somebody who can help us, uh, find common ground, as, as Mary Jo put it. That we also have that person, uh, be the point person with respect to the search firm, um, and have all communications, uh, handled in that way. Um, and that we, uh, go ahead and, uh, you know, retain a search firm, and, um, we may want to tighten up the guidelines and, and how we operate, and we, I, I, I think we're all agreed that we don't need to redo the front end of the process where we got community input and where we got some sense of what we're looking for. I think we have a pretty good idea of what we'd like. Um, and then to, to, to retain independent legal counsel. I think that, uh, you know, I, we really haven't discussed it at length, but I think that that'd be important, uh, that we have. Um, I don't think that it makes sense, um, and I, I, in fairness to our general counsel, uh, I don't think that, you know, putting him in that role makes any sense, and that we should have somebody independent. And, you know, I, so I'd like to, you know, set aside that closing date question for the moment, and get at the, uh, get at the main motion.
Parliamentarian?
Delete, um, out of that second section, everything from the words "no later than" on. You, you need to vote that up or vote that down? You can't go back to the main motion unless the, uh, Board Member Cole owns the amendment. Mr. Cole has the option to withdraw his motion. That withdrawal does not require a second or approval because he owns that amendment. So, you can do that, but then you're back to the main motion, which reads with all the dates.
Right. We do have a couple other comments on this particular amendment. Ms. Gibbs?
Um, I, thank you. My question was to restate the motion and to ask for a friendly amendment from Board Member Cole. So, could you restate the motion as you propose it?
Maybe you could restate the motion?
Yes.
The amendment?
Well, the, the amendment that was placed on the floor, uh, and you all have the original resolution, the amendment that was placed on the floor, is that I understand it, is the, the last paragraph, which would be the fifth resolved paragraph, as it was identified, would read, "Resolved that the Board of Education will be," I'm sorry, let me begin again, "resolved, the board will begin the new search." Period. That was the amendment, as I, as I heard it. And that's currently what's on the floor for a vote.
Ms. Gibbs?
Amendment to add the word "immediately" after the word "new search" to reflect the board's and my colleagues' urgency that we get started as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I would like to do is withdraw the motion. I would like to withdraw the motion. Now, can I offer a new amendment as we're in discussion?
You may.
All right.
The President, so identified.
I would like the amendment to read, "Resolved, the board will begin a new search no later than April 3rd, 2018."
You get your statement.
Everything. Well, immediately is fine. Immediately. And then, strike everything else.
All right. So, we have a new amendment offered. Is there a second, and then we'll have discussion on that amendment? Moved in second. Okay. Ms. Hudson, I saw your arm up, and then Mr. Paredes.
Thank you. I, I think, um, I, I think we're in the same place we were before. I would suggest, um, whether it's a friendly amendment, or we withdraw, adding, retaining, and we'll use its best efforts to conclude the new search as soon as possible. Um, and, um, that would remove the June 30th date, but it would say, "We're going to work our tails off to get this done."
All right. Mr. Vice President, you have the opportunity to withdraw your most recent amendment.
I withdraw.
All right. And you're make, you're going to offer. All right. So, Mr. Vice President, you're now going to offer a new amendment, which I believe would read as follows. "Resolved, the board will begin a new search immediately."
So, "Resolved, the board will begin a new search immediately, and will use its best efforts to conclude the new search as soon as possible."
Is there a second? Any more discussion on that, or this amendment? Any discussion on this amendment? Mr. Paredes?
I just don't understand the point of taking out the dates. Other, I mean, saying immediately, you know, is, is nice and all, but, like, the dates, the start date shouldn't be, shouldn't be concerned at all. The end date is permissive. So, I, I don't understand why we're so concerned about the end date when it is permissive, when we have the ability to be flexible. This, this gives us some solid scaffolding to work around. You know, I mean, what we're changing the amendment to legally does nothing to change the essence of what we're trying to do. It does the same thing. And, and I get, you know, the spirit of things, but like, best efforts means permissive. And then, April 3rd, I mean, it's, it's a good, I mean, it's just my concern.
All right. Um, thank you, Mr. Paredes. Uh, the question has been called, and so, um, I'd like to, unless there's any objection, close debate on that particular amendment. All right. Hearing no objection. All right. We do have an amendment that's been duly seconded and discussed. And, Mr. Treasurer, please call the roll on the amendment.
May I make it perfectly clear what you're voting on?
Yes, please.
You're voting on an amendment to this original, um, resolution that was placed before you, and that amends the last paragraph to read, "Resolved, the board will begin the new search immediately, and will use its best efforts to conclude the new search as soon as possible." That's the amendment.
Yeah, I do believe that's correct.
Okay.
Please call the roll on the amendment.
All right. President Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Paredes?
No.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
The amendment carried. You now have the motion as amended on the floor for discussion.
Colleagues, we now have an amended motion before us, and is there, Ms. Gibbs? Yes, ma'am.
So, to the, um, to the point of this motion, I would like to ask, because we, we weren't, I wasn't a part of drafting this, can Board Member Hudson speak to, what I have labeled as Paragraph Three, uh, talk about the mediator? Who have you seen in this space, this work? And what is the vision for, um, the workings of this? Just want to make sure we have full conversation about it.
If I could, I'd like to first defer to Board Member Brown, who does, who, uh, as a former judge, has dealt with mediators.
And I have served as a mediator extensively as, as well, but, uh, I think that, um, a couple things. One, I think we can all recognize that, um, having somebody that can help the seven of us facilitate the discussion, help us find common ground, um, help us to, you know, it's our votes. This is not somebody with any authority to vote or to sway things one way or another, but it's somebody that can really explore and, and help us do the jobs that we want. Secondly, want this person to have some experience and skills as mediator. I think that's very important. And working with the seven of us is not going to be an easy feat. So, we need somebody who is strong enough in that role, uh, while respecting the independence that each of us have in decision-making and voting. I believe that we should have somebody who is acquainted with Ohio sunshine laws, both as to public records and as to open meetings. Clearly, that's one of the matters that brought us to this point. And having somebody that is familiar with that, I think is important. And I think that, uh, having that person help facilitate communication with the executive search firm, facilitate, facilitating scheduling, uh, facilitating, um, uh, scheduling not only of, of, you know, helping us with scheduling, because that, I think we can all agree, has been challenging at times, uh, but helping with scheduling of, uh, prospective candidates to interview and that sort of thing. It's, I think it's a role similar. That will, this last part of it, the scheduling and the point person, is similar, uh, in some ways to what we had initially thought of J.C. doing for us, and then it drifted away from that, uh, in many ways. Uh, so, it's, it's, um, somebody who can, um, you know, keep track of things and report back to us, um, and keep us informed of the progress and the status. And it will take away any concerns that any one of us may have about, uh, communications by individual board members with the search firm or otherwise, that would not be appropriate. Nobody need be concerned about those individual communications. It would all go through, uh, this point person. Mary Jo?
If it's okay, I'll just add, um, generally, folks who are mediators are trained, um, in dispute resolution, to train to, it'll, there are folks that are either, might have a legal background, social work background. I, uh, while this, this, um, the mechanics of identifying, uh, a mediator, it's, I would say unusual for the situation, but not, there are mediators that will work with boards, and there are folks that do, but work with all kinds of boards to help get to a resolution, get to more common ground. I would see, I would suggest with this, I think we, um, uh, consider working with a local, uh, maybe a, a local expert, or local, uh, resource or resource to the district, such as asking the ESC to help us with findings, identifying folks or, or candidates, and then we come up with a way that we'll decide and I, um, identify those mediators and decide. If they're going to be, the narrow thing, I think here, there are a lot of mediators trained in dispute resolution, probably not as many that also know sunshine laws. And so, we have independent counsel in here, and so certainly, we would want the legal advice to, to be there, but if, I would say, for example, somebody that might have experience in working with a government agency, uh, or a government, you know, government, um, uh, service, would have that sunshine law, um, background and be, be helpful. I have, I do not have a candidate in mind as doing this. I don't have any particular in mind, but I think we could, uh, work with resources available to us to help identify someone. Because there are, there are panels of folks to call on to do this.
Thank you. Ms. Gibbs?
Mr. President, I'd like to offer an amendment that we remove Paragraph Six, that it's reading, "Resolved that the board will instruct the search firm that the mediator will serve as its point of contact to the search firm for all services associated with the new search."
Okay. So, there's an amendment to remove the fourth resolved clause, which is second from the bottom. Is there a second? The fourth resolved clause?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Discussion on the amendment. Ms. Gibbs?
So, my, my, my challenge with that and understanding what we're saying, uh, let me say this, there is no mediator that can, um, change our, our feelings. And there's no mediator that can say, "Because we have them, now the, the balance or the way we believe we should move forward is going to change." I think a mediator can, but I want to talk about them, if they are not skilled in sunshine law, and they are not skilled in executive search, then I think it's more appropriate for us to have a facilitator for board development, and they work with us as a board. But if they are not skilled, then my concern is they are not, they don't have the expertise to navigate an executive search. From what you just explained, that's not what they do. I'm, I am, I think I, I support onboarding a facilitator to work with us and work with us through the process. But, we as a board, and, and as a board in executive search, I've been through two superintendents, two auditors, and three treasurers for Columbus City. So, this is the first time that we're thinking about putting them into the search. But I do think we should, and I would be supportive of having them work with us, but where I'm reading this scheduling coordination of the process, that's what we're hiring the search firm to do. And so, the search firm has a lot of these responsibilities. And so, so, yeah, so, and, and maybe it should also be number three to look at the duties we're asking them to do. I think I'm supportive of a facilitator being a part of this, and we can do a lot of work. We need to do some board development as a part of our process, because we need to be the board that a candidate would want to work for. We need to be a city that a candidate wants to come to, and we need an environment that they feel like they can succeed in. So, I am for facilitator, I am for working, but I'm not, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable with what I'm hearing about what they do, that they should be the mediator and serve as the point of contact to the search firm. And I'm also concerned, um, about their roles in number three, in Paragraph Three under the first resolved, that those, those roles are not a part of the functions of the search firm. So, I don't want to pay two people to do the same thing. That's the role of the search firm, to schedule and do the interviews and do the public engagement. That's what they do. So, let me withdraw that motion and offer a new motion that says, "We will strike Number Six and under Number Three to stop at work with the mediator to conduct a new search."
Okay. So, so you're, the first amendment you offered, you've now rescinded, you've offered a new amendment which would remove the fourth resolved clause, and that would also remove part of the first resolved clause?
The first resolved clause would end after conducting new search. And the, the six, we, the, one, two, three, fourth resolved clause will be, be removed. And I think, not in this session, but moving forward in another work session, we talk about the work that we want the mediator to do, and we clearly delineate what the mediator and, and the search firm will do. But I, I'm, I'm for having them, but I want to make sure we're not paying them to do the work that the search firm should be doing.
Okay. So, that's a motion, and is there a second? Moved in second. Discussion. Okay. Board Member Hudson?
So, a couple things. One, while it would be nice to do board development, I've served on this board for four years, and we have done next-to-no board development, despite discussion after discussion about that. This, we, this is about leadership of this effort. This is about moving it forward, again, quickly. We, time is of the essence for us. We have screwed up the old process, and we have got to remedy that. Not soon, not after we developed, now. And so, having a mediator is about putting us together in the room, and if we're not agreeing, kind of helping us get to yes, and identify both sides or multiple sides of a discussion, so we get to yes. The additional, the, the additional, um, duties that are set forth in the, in the, uh, second resolution, um, would be, uh, as, would contemplate that the mediator would serve as the point person for us and for, with the search firm. And so, it would, it would really amount to that the board, independent, individual board members, whether it's board leadership or any of us, do not contact the search firm directly individually, do not work with the search firm individually, do not say, "Here are certain candidates that we would like to see and not see," and, and, and have a process that we can all trust. This is, part of this process is, is we got to the point, so much happened behind the scenes in this former process, that it, we, it would, there was no, I have no trust in left in how we did it. And I would, I would urge us to put, get mediator in place.
get mediator in place. There are mediators, it would be appropriate to do this, and, and I would not support that the person, that mediator does not serve as the point person on this search. It, I think it's important to knit this together and get this done because time is of the essence with respect to, I think, what the state auditor has advised us regarding our former process. So, I, I would urge that we withdraw this amendment.
Mr. Brown?
I was going to say, I, I agree fully with what Mary Jo just had to say. I think that it is important that the, that we all trust the communications between the board and our executive search firm, and that we have somebody who can help move things along, especially now that we're taking a, a closing, a firm closing date out, that can help move things along, work with us on, you know, the, the scheduling, and, and can help move the search firm along to do what it needs to do as well. I think that those are important things, and I am very confident that there are a fair number of people who have the skills and training in mediation, that can help us facilitate those things, and that can perform the, the rest of the duties and understand government and sunshine laws as well. All government in Ohio and probably everywhere these days are governed by sunshine laws. It isn't unique to schools, so that anybody who has done any work in the public sector is going to have acquaintance with that. And, yeah, there will be an attorney advising us on those things and other compliance matters as well. I don't see that there are duplication of services. I think we may want to define very clearly something the board would do as well as with the assistance of a mediator, facilitator, what the person's called is, is not necessarily of great significance, but in, in narrowing and focusing the search firm more specifically. You know, we all had some concerns and questions about the search firm's work, and I think that it can be tightened up significantly, and those roles defined even more clearly.
I believe that, Ms. Reyes, you were next? No, all right. So, Mr. Mr. Peretti?
Sure.
Okay.
I guess, I just have a concern that we're diluting what we're trying to do. None of this, none of this takes away any of this perceived power that we have as board members. We act as a group, first of all. Second of all, this is belts and suspenders to make sure we do this process in an accountable and transparent way, and that nobody has their feelings hurt. Because I think they're exactly right about the trust issue. I think we need to have a, a piece in here that takes away that, and that we can have a level playing field, so we can have the best candidates, so we can have a process that we don't create an environment of, of, where any individual that's going to come into this district knows where each and every single one of us stand as a board member before they gave an interview, which was a big part of the problem last time. I guarantee that, absolutely. We need to create a process where it's fair to everyone, where we have trust for everyone. This is all this does. It helps us more.
Thank you. Ms. Gibbs?
So, thank you for those comments, and, and I think they make me look at this amendment and believe in it even more. Because trust is a challenge all the way around. And so, I, I don't want that statement, though, to go forward as if though there were some, some, you know, yeah, I, well, let me say this. I want to look at this amendment as saying this. If this proposal asks for a mediator, we can have a mediator. We want to work with a firm, but number one, if I'm working for a search firm, if a search firm is working for us, they absolutely need to hear from us. I'm not, I believe that the, in order for the search firm to understand where we are and what we want, as a part of their process, they interview. Every single search firm we've ever worked with interviews all seven board members to understand not what one board member wants, but what the collective. And we represent a diversity of opinions, backgrounds, and expertise. We represent a diversity of constituencies, but our number one unified consumer is our district, and we're all working for what is best for the district. So, whatever our issues are, we as a board need to tackle that. We need to, and when we talk about board development, we have to commit to doing it, making it a part of our agenda, do it, don't do it. But what we're suffering from right now is not doing board development, not working together and doing team building. It results in the antithesis, which is lack of trust. So, the communication, I don't feel at any point this firm did not know exactly what I thought, and they did not get information from the community. As board member Peretti says, they got a lot of input on how we should move forward. So, that communication was fine, the navigation was fine. I offer that this amendment provides that we have a mediator, and that we work, we don't have to solve it today, but we work to delineate those duties from the search firm, so we know what the mediator is going to do, we know what the search firm is going to do, and we know what the outside legal counsel is going to do. And we make sure that we are very clear about all three. And if we are going to bring the best candidate, and our auditor has asked us to do this better, we need the best team. I'm not comfortable with having somebody who may or may not have experience. I believe we can find an amazing facilitator to work with us, but when it comes to running this next process, we need our best players on the field, and if you are not the best right now, you, you don't need to be on this team.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. I do believe the order is Reyes, Brown, Cole, Hudson. Board member Reyes?
Thank you. So, board member Hudson, that's, that's where I'm getting confused with your comments versus deferring to, you deferred to a person, to board member Brown, who states that you've been a mediator, and you've worked with sunshine laws, and that you're very comfortable and familiar with Ohio sunshine laws, as many of us go through training. So, what you said was the mediator was to help us, I guess, confer, confer better. I, I'm trying to kind of decipher the words. To me, it seems like both of you are saying something different. When you provide feedback and you talk about applicants, and you talk about qualifications, and you talk about fit of the district, and you talk about their application process, and when you hire a firm, and you make sure that the firm provides you with all applicants, even the applicants that they do not know, because not one search firm in this whole entire U.S.A. national world, whatever you want to say, knows every applicant that may be available or may be interested to come into and apply for this district. The notion of individual conversations, I, I don't know what that means. But if I am unsatisfied with something a search firm is doing, everybody that's on this board has an expertise. Everybody on this board has worked, you, you as chief justice, past chief justice, and, and as a lawyer, some of us have experience in, in public relations, some of us have experience in human resources, many of us have participated in interview processes and so forth. If, if we feel, I'm confused as to what, there's a difference between having somebody run around and schedule us and a, and/or having somebody guide a process to gather feedback to move a process. That's where I'm getting confused. Are they here to, okay, seven board members, get out your calendars, let's figure out when we can meet, or are they truly here to say, you know, share your feedback, let's gather, and then, once you do that, then you have to come out to, to a board meeting and make your vote? I think one of the comments that was said, saying, gather us and, and, and make decisions, that's not, I don't believe that that's what the letter of your intent is. It's to make sure that all opinions are heard, make sure all feedback is heard. That's where, that's why I wanted to hear. I want to be clear as to what this mediator, facilitator, whatever you want to call them, is really going to do. And I'm, I'm confused as to that wording. So, again, I'm not opposed to a mediator. You've got seven people. You know, there's going to be a lot of differences of opinion, there's going to be a lot of differences of how you see viable individuals and applicants. And, yeah, and that, that, having somebody to help facilitate that is doable. So, that's my two cents.
May I quickly read some, Mr. Vice, Mr. President, just quickly?
Mr. Vice President?
So, resolved, this is the first resolved paragraph, okay? Because I, I think this kind of lends to what you're asking, but let's do this as a point of clarification. The board will retain a non-voting mediator knowledgeable and skilled in both dispute resolution and Ohio sunshine laws. In parentheses, the mediator to work with the board, to work with the board to conduct the new search, including scheduling, coordination of the process, executive search. So, again, let's, let's, let's bring final resolve or understanding to the idea of what to work with entails. You are saying, board member Peretti, that this does not entail us absolving our authorities ultimately as a board, first and foremost, to of course, vote for who the new superintendent will be, but most importantly, to have efficacy throughout the entire process, that we lead the process, we mandate what it is to the mediator that it is that we want, and then that mediator then follows suit. Kind of the same way that J.C. did in the last process. But, so, I, I, is that the spirit of what you're saying? Is this the crux of it right here? To work with the board, meaning that we still have ultimate authority, we still have efficacy in the process, and that, that mediator then acts as the coordinating body, the coordinating person who is the point of contact for us and the firm, to ensure that the things that we need to get to do on our end are accomplished, and to hold the search firm accountable in their work. Is that correct?
Mr. Vice President, thank you for that point of clarification and request. And so, let's, let's move on to Mr. Brown, who was next, because maybe he's-
Yeah, I just, I'm just asking my colleagues. Is that correct?
All right, well, all right. If, if no one objects, we're going to go out of order. I want to honor-
And my apologies, but-
That's all right. Are you all right?
She has a change.
All right. Board member Hudson?
First thing is, yes, it's, this is, that's why non-voting, they're not, they would not, this media would not have selection. I think it's worth working with us. The one piece that I think is, maybe it's, I assume too much, but by having a mediator, the other person, that person is with us to help us work together, so they would help effectively kind of coordinate that meeting. You know, they would help us, if we hit a sticking point in working out an issue, they could help us resolve, you know, help us, help us talk together and communicate together to get to that point. So, but they, and they also then would, it's somewhat also project managing it to get us there, too. I, I would, if it would, if folks would be comfortable, I have a couple suggestions I could, maybe that would make, it would help folks be more comfortable without changing at least the spirit of what, what I, I think was intended here. In that second resolution, so result that, that Vice President Cole referred to, resolve the, the board, and I'll come back to, we would keep everything in the, to the fourth line, so, so it's retain a non-voting mediator. Let me just, knowledgeable and skilled in dispute resolution and the sunshine laws, to work with the board to conduct the new search, including scheduling, coordination of the process, executive search firm bidding. And it has and selection that is intended to be helping us get to yes on that issue, not necessarily, not that they would vote, that's the non-voting. So, we could take and selection out if that, for clarification, candidate solicitation and, and selection. Again, that, that is, the and selection may not be necessary there. I think what we could do is clarify here next, adding scheduling the candidate interview process and adding with the board. So, they would help us effectively pare down, you know, talk, so we pare down that list of candidates, make our decision, vote on that decision, and go forward with those interviews. And, and I think to the earlier comments about including public engagement, I don't disagree that that is the search firm, and that, but it was intended to be about the scheduling process. And then, in terms of public report, the, the rest of it and public reporting, we take that off and say, meeting with the board during all search efforts instead. And so, there is one thing I might add there, and that's, at the beginning, would be the board will and adding work with the central Ohio E.S.C. I think, work with the E.S.C. as a member, and they have them help us identify a mediator.
So, could you read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
You're offering this as a friendly amendment?
Um, it was a-
Just read it through first.
I'll read it first.
Yeah, read it from beginning to end. Thank you very much.
Resolve, resolve that the board will work with the central Ohio E.S.C. to retain a non-voting mediator knowledgeable and skilled in both dispute resolution and Ohio sunshine laws, the mediator, to work with the board to conduct the new search, including scheduling, coordination of the process, executive search firm bidding, candidate solicitation, comma, scheduling the candidate interview process with the board, comma, and meeting with the board during all search efforts.
All right, so we, the person who offered the amendment initially, are you in a position to withdraw your amendment and offer a new one based on that verbiage?
I'm not. It, I'm not. But I'm with you all the way up to the candidate solicitation, the candidate. I, I still believe that's the search firm's job. And I think, I think if it's worded that to conduct the new search, so we're, we're in, we are in agreement up until conducting new search, so E.S.C. or O.S.B.A., either or. But I'm okay with up in there. But say, I would say, including coordination of the process in conjunction with the search firm. And, and that says, we'll work with them, but they are going to work with the search firm, because we don't want to pay two people to do the same thing. The cert, this is the search, the candidate, the, I mean, not the bidding and selection, because we, we do have to do that. So, I could go up to bidding and selection. But once we hire a firm, this is squarely their job, and reviewing all of those proposals, this is what every single search firm said they would do, the candidate selection, the interview. So, if we could say that all the way up until we will conduct a new search, including coordinating the process, firm bidding and selection, and working with the search firm to conclude, to have a successful search. I, I would go with something like that. But I want to make sure the search firm, we're not letting them off the hook, because this is clearly what they do, and it's their expertise. Does that, does that sound okay with everybody?
Ms. Hudson?
I just want to make sure, so the mediator would be sort of, there is the search firm, this is, there was no intention to have them supplant the search firm's expertise or duties. But this was meant to be on our side. So, the coordination from the board perspective, sort of our, you know, that lead, the lead duck, you know, the lead goose there in the V, is this, is the mediator to help us move forward. I think, so, so, Sean, so you have it, do you want to read it, and I, so?
Resolve that the board will retain a non-voting mediator knowledgeable and skilled in both dispute resolution and Ohio sunshine laws, the mediator, which E.S.C. is in there somewhere, to work with the board to conduct the new search, including coordination of the process, firming, executive, or, I don't know, firm bidding and selection, and working with the selected- the selected search firm throughout the search. Or working with the Board and the search firm to execute the search.
Okay, yeah. Meeting with the Board.
Oh, no, 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 I need to still do that.
And the search firm. Search efforts.
So, you're amending your amendment?
Yes. But I'm still striking number six because I think this gives it what we need to do.
Mister, Mister Parliamentarian?
So...
Can she amend?
I can withdraw and just...
Okay.
Okay.
So, you have withdrawn your amendment?
Yes.
And you're offering a new one?
President Baker, I offer a new amendment that would strike the fourth resolve and that the first resolve will read, resolve that the Board will retain a non-voting mediator knowledgeable and skilled in both dispute resolution and Ohio sunshine laws. The mediator to work with the Board to conduct the new search, including coordination of the process, firm and firm bidding and selection. And you want me to add and to work with the E.S.C.?
Mona and I were just...
Yeah, and to work with the E.S.C.
Yeah. But then have this at the end, and working with the Board and search firm during all search efforts.
And to work with the Board and the search firm during all search efforts.
Yes. Do you want to read that again?
Sure. Yes.
We want to make sure the Treasurer has this accurately for the minutes.
And I'll hand you this.
Thank goodness.
Thank goodness, yes.
We think we got it.
So, I'm going to reread the, the top. So, resolve that the Board will, will work with the E.S.C. to retain a non-voting mediator knowledgeable and skilled in both dispute resolution and Ohio sunshine laws, the mediator, to work with the Board to conduct the new search, including coordination of the process, the executive search for firm bidding and selection, and to work with the Board and the search firm during all search efforts. And that removes paragraph, the third, fourth resolve, one, two, three, four.
Um, wait a minute. That removes, I'm sorry.
One, two, three.
And, and I do want to clarify for all of us...
Do we have a second?
That we get, that we number these accurately so that we're referring, there have been a couple of different ways people, the paragraph that starts out, the second paragraph that starts out now therefore be it resolved is number one.
Yes.
No, I said, I said the fourth resolved. One, two, three, four.
Wait, wait.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
She's actually talking about the fourth resolve.
The fourth resolve.
Okay. But there had been some other, I just want to make sure all are the same.
All right, so for clarification from the Chair, the second from the bottom will be removed as part of this amendment, so res...
I'm then to divide that question. Let's complete our work on the second.
It was all one motion.
Well...
It was all one amendment.
All right, and I'm moving to divide the question, and let's address two.
I have a suggestion on that second and last one, okay? Let's, let's put it on all. She has a suggestion to combine.
All right, let me ask this, Mister Parliamentarian. Mister Brown has suggested we may divide this particular question. Her amendment affects two different resolved clauses. Is that, is that permitted?
She, she's made a motion.
Mm-hmm.
And that motion is pretty inclusive. The first, the first comment she made was to strike the fourth resolve, which for point of clarification was the fourth paragraph that begins with the word resolved.
Yes.
Technically, it's the fifth because the first resolve starts now therefore, okay?
Correct.
So, that, she is striking the paragraph that reads, resolve that the Board will instruct the search firm and the mediator, that the mediator will serve it as its point of contact. That is being stricken in this amendment. And the...
And that's why that's strengthened.
First resolve, technically the second, the one following, the now therefore, the resolve that the Board will work with the E.S.C., on and on, um, you've eliminated scheduling and, and added, and to work with the Board and search firm on all search activities.
On all search efforts.
All search efforts.
And that, that is the, that is the amendment that is currently before us.
And that's the amendment as it stands now.
Okay.
So, here, I would suggest this, so this is what we just talked about. But then to address both things, just to address both issues, that in five, that's second to last one, at the end, we'd say, provided that nothing in this resolution shall limit the search firm from, sorry, that's from, interviewing Board members in the ordinary course of the search. It was meant just to be about services, and so it was just about the coordination, not about supplanting us in any way.
Okay, um...
You would think we were all attorneys.
I'm staying here. That the mediator will serve as its point of contact. Um, I think that what we did up here can address, I, I think, I think what we did in the first one can address what we're trying to get at in the search firm being the point of contact because we don't know what the search firm is going to ask for, but that as we move forward, we're asking all of them to work in tandem in that, um, the Board can, I, I think that's given directive to a search firm before we hear what the search firm wants to do and how they want to work, and that we already have the facilitator. If our facilitator is working with us, then our search firm, if we have all three of these, then the, we should be able to work with the search firm. So, I think strengthening this means we don't, we don't need this. I think we'll get where we need to be because we will have a facilitator, but that they don't need to do the interference. I think this, I think strengthening this one and, and knowing what our, our facilitator is going to do means we don't, we don't need to make this line.
Thank you.
Thank you, M.J.
All right, so, well, let's, let's pause for a moment. So, did we have a second to Ms. Gibbs' current amendment? Ms. Reyes, I think you may have seconded this.
Well, I was just trying to see how we can do the both, but if you need a second to continue conversation, absolutely.
Yes, please. Okay. Moved and seconded, all right. Mister Brown?
With respect to the fifth resolution that we're now talking about, and it sounds to me as though we're all set on the second paragraph. Um, the problem that I, you know, one of the concerns that this addresses is that during the first search process, there were some end runs. There were some communications from individual Board members to the search firm that affected the process. And I think those are inappropriate. This Board works only as a Board. Individual Board members have no authority, cannot speak for the Board, and our communications to the search firm and to these other folks that we're talking about have to be on behalf of the Board, not individually, about what a Board member does or does not want. So, part of the goal here, I think, is that we cut that off and that we make sure that we're transparent, that communications to the firm are those of the Board and not those of individual members. Clearly, I don't want to get in the way of the search firm interviewing each of us. That, this is not about that, but this is about the other communications that took place inappropriately and making sure that that doesn't happen. Um, and, and, you know, it's a, it is an ongoing concern, and I think that language very much like this can solve that, especially with the further suggestion that, that Mary Jo made with modifying this fifth resolution.
Thank you. And, thank you, President Baker, and Board Member Brown. I think the idea that, and we don't need to debate whether it was appropriate or inappropriate, but working with your search firm, they solicit a lot of ideas. I think we just made very good ground, and I think strengthening of the paragraph talking about the mediator and the safeguards that this proposal brings. Thank you, Board Member Hudson, for bringing it. I think with the amendments and putting this there, this is a great start, and we, we're, we've put in enough new, um, factors that I think will have a better search and it will be stronger. So, as it is proposed, we are going to add the mediator, we're adding legal counsel, and we're going to begin a new search, we're terminating the last search, and we, we will retain another search firm. I think in the spirit of what we wanted to do coming here, this current, this current, um, proposal accomplishes all of that, and that we're not done. We still have to come back and talk about, now, let's talk about how we select the mediator and what we need them to do. So, there's still further work, and we can further accomplish, I think, what that paragraph does. And I, and I'm, I'm just very happy to the, to where we've gotten with this, and I think we can get there.
Mister, Mister Brown?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I think that, that does solve it. I think that we, you know, we already have rules in place that should solve that other concern. It was put here in part because those rules that preclude that kind of bypass communication hadn't been entirely observed or observed as faithfully as they could be. But they are there, and if this resolution doesn't have this, uh, language, I think, you know, I think we can live with it and move forward. Um, but I, I think that if nothing else, that the conversation about this, Resolution Five, helps to highlight for all of us, as well as others, that, um, you know, we operate as a Board. We don't have any independent authority, that we can't speak individually. So, I, you know...
I, I think it does that. I think moving forward, we're all committed to doing better, but most importantly, moving forward.
All right, so, colleagues, we have, we have an amendment on the floor that's been duly offered and seconded. Further discussion?
So, just to clarify, so...
We, um, we strength, we changed number two as, as Board Member Gibbs read, and the suggestion is to delete number five. What's number five right now?
Let's strengthen number two. If number five is not in two, strengthen it so that it's together.
What would, would you add anything more to number two to strengthen it?
Would you, do you have a suggestion?
Well, the, I, um...
Board Member Hudson, let me offer something that might be helpful.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to propose that we, the Board, specifically plan a work session to, after we've adopted this resolution, that we meet in a public work session to talk about how we proceed, and we can talk at that time, I think, about some rules of the road that we want to make sure we observe. And I think that, I think setting aside some time specifically to do that as a Board rather than keeping all these people here today as we discuss minutia may serve us better. That's my suggestion.
President Baker, I don't...
Yes, ma'am.
Respectfully, I don't know that this is minutia.
Yeah.
Um, and I think this is about, this is just about, again, who's the lead duck? And, um, with getting us through, getting us from point A to point B.
So, what's not in here?
So, um, well, I guess in the absence of saying lead duck, um, I, I think, the primary, and, and working with the Board and...
Communicating with the search firm?
Board Member Gibbs, who's the owner of the amendment?
Yes. Um, Board Member Hudson and colleagues, is this something that we can work through and then when we onboard them, we can add the language that we want to add to that conversation when we're specifically about to onboard the mediator? And that way, we'll have time to think through their roles and talk about it at the Board work session. And because right now, this, this, um, this, uh, proposal brings them and it enables us to find them, and then we still have an opportunity to talk about our roles and our expectations when we onboard both them and the search firm. And I, I mean, we just have more opportunities to be specific and to address the, our concerns because right now, we're just enabling them.
Mister Vice Pres, I'm sorry, Mister Vice President?
I think...
Beg your pardon.
I'm sorry.
Mister Vice President?
I, I, I don't totally disagree with this because, again, if you look at the language as it is written, as we have amended it to this point, and I know I took a quick bathroom break, um, but as we amended it to this point, the language and spirit of it is, is that this individual who is the mediator will work with us through the process. If anything, I love to maybe call this mediator or assign some language to this just somewhere that says project manage. That, to me, that, that, that sums it all up in terms of what our expectation of this mediator is. Again, that this mediator holds no sovereignty over us because first and foremost, he is non-voting, he or she is non-voting. Secondly, because we are guiding the process, setting the expectation, and it is the job of the mediator to execute. This person is merely just ideally an executioner, someone who is, who is implementing, that person's job is implementive. So, I'm okay with it. I'm definitely okay with having a work session where we tease out the other aspects of what we expect out of the process. And then that, you know, develop our own sense of trust, our own sense of stabilizing this process and building confidence moving forward. But I'm happy with things the way they are, with exception to maybe putting somewhere in here, project management, making sure that, and, and, and that's not a hill for me to die on either. I, I'm really happy with the language to, to an extent the way it is. We can then figure out, moving forward, how we tease out the rest.
Okay. And, all right. Any further discussion? Board Member Hudson?
Um, Board Member Reyes and I have a suggestion, if you won't mind me saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, um, with her helpful suggestions, in that second line, to work with the Board to adding, facilitate communications among Board members and with the search firm, comma, to, to conduct the cer, oh, no, no comma, I think, to conduct the cer, the new search. So, adding facilitate communications among Board members and with the search firm to conduct the new search.
I accept a friendly amendment.
To act as a mediator, that's...
Yeah.
That's a definitely...
You don't work on this?
Yes. So, in the second line, to work with the Board to adding the words facilitate communications among Board members and with the search, capital S, search, capital F, firm, and then adding the word to, and then continue, conduct the new search.
All right.
And, and, and you said facilitate communication among Board members and the search...
And with the search firm.
And with the search firm...
To.
To conduct the new search.
Yes.
Okay.
And so, having said that, I do believe that Ms. Gibbs withdraws her prior...
Well, she accepted that.
Are you okay with that?
We're just, we're going to move, we're just moving on.
Thank you, Mister Parliamentarian, thank you.
Take some liberties here, if it's okay.
No objection.
Let's move on.
So, we, yes, we do. So, we do have a, an amendment before us that has been duly seconded and discussed, and if there's nothing further, Mister Treasurer, please.
Okay, this is on the amendment. Mister Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Mister Peretti?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
And President Baker?
Yes.
That amendment carried.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? We are back to our main motion. Mister Peretti?
So, I mean, and maybe, I mean, I know we do want to have a work session, but I think we should also maybe start the beginnings of the conversation of a few pieces, you know, as we go through this, you know, the process of picking the mediator, the process of picking the independent counsel, and the process of the, the search firm. Um, you know, I, you know, I'll just throw it out there. I mean, we spent $50,000 on H.Y.A., you know, I would, you know, like to continue, to have them to at least produce the services of sending things out. We, that's something that we have to discuss, but I mean, those are things that we have to discuss. How do we, how do we pick the mediator? How do we pick, you know, you know, do we have, do a few of us, maybe two Board members get together over the next week and discuss that? Do we do it public, you know, how do we do that? Is my question, is that, um, how do we pick the mediator, how we pick the legal counsel, and what do we do about the search firm? Those are three sort of big things that I want us to at least to consider talking about so we can start to see this process going forward outside of the resolution. And I think Ms. Hudson had a comment on that. And I think Ms. Hudson had a comment on that.
Board Member Hudson?
I would just, I would just suggest, so in the, in number two, we added the work with the ESC to retain the mediator. I would suggest that we do that post haste. We set a work session with that mediator immediately, and then we come up with a framework to do the ballot, to select the counsel. I understand we have a list of counsel, and so I think we could probably come up with a process to, that's pretty objective. What do you charge? What do you do? What kind of skills do you have? And then, who, or, when do you, who's available the most? And we narrow that down. And then, and then I think Board Member Peretti's point is a great one about, you know, do we have, do we continue to use HYA because of the funding? Do we, can we claw back any of that money? I mean, is that, you know, there, there are, I think, a myriad of issues that I think we could address with our counsel, and then go into that or quickly get a search firm. And, and so I would suggest we, we work on the mediator first, we set that work session as with, we, when we have that, the mediator recommendation, and hopefully can get a mediator in here quickly.
But who contacts the ESC? That's, that's my question.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yeah, I think our leadership can do that. Right now, I'd love to vote on this motion, and then afterwards, I think we could talk about our next steps. Yeah.
Very well then.
Call them, call a question.
Mr. Treasurer?
Would you permit me and humor me to allow me to attempt to read the resolution in its entirety as I have, have heard it and tried to piece it together?
Please do, thank you.
Okay, thank you. The resolution, as amended twice, now reads, whereas it would be in the best interest of the district and its students to terminate the current search and begin a new search process for a superintendent, parenthetically, a new search. So there are no questions that the board acted fully in compliance with the law and the spirit of Ohio sunshine laws as to open meetings and public records, ORC Section 121.22. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education for Columbus City Schools shall terminate its current search process. And resolved that the board, that the board will work with the ESC, and I'll put in their actual name, there's an actual name for them, to retain a non-voting mediator knowledgeable and skilled in both dispute resolution and Ohio sunshine laws, the mediator, to work with the board to facilitate communications among board members and with the search firm to conduct the new search, including coordination of the process, executive search firm bidding and selection, and to work with the board and search firm on all search efforts. And resolved that the board will retain independent legal counsel to advise the board with respect to all legal and compliance issues associated with the new search. And resolved that the board will retain an executive search firm, the search firm, to serve as a consultant to the board for the new search. And resolved that the board will begin the new search immediately and will use its best efforts to conclude the new search as soon as possible.
Colleagues, I, I do believe that's correct.
That removed, it included what Vice President Cole had talked about the very last paragraph. We got that resolved. And then this was the result of the discussions, which included the complete removal of the one paragraph about point person. And I think everything else, hopefully.
Very good. If there's no further discussion, Mr. Treasurer, please.
Vice President Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Peretti?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
That motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, for your diligent efforts on our behalf this morning. Thank you, colleagues. So I do believe that next steps are critically important, and so what I'd like to do is ask you all to be as quickly responsive to J.C. as possible as he works to schedule a work session just as soon as possible. I did request and do have a list of potential firms that could serve as independent legal counsel. I'll bring that. And I also, if no one objects, I will reach out to the ESC, give them a copy of our resolution, and ask them to provide us with a list of potential mediators that fit the bill. And I'll bring that to the work session as well, and hopefully we can plan that within the next, I know it's Holy Week and it's Easter, but I, I do want to move as quickly as possible. Time is of the essence. So am I forgetting anything? Ms. Gibbs?
When is our next scheduled board meeting?
So it is Wednesday, the fourth. Because, Mr. Brown?
You said you have a list of law firms. What's the source of that? And, you know, I may have some that I'd like to add to the-
Oh, and absolutely, absolutely. If anyone wants to, if anyone would like to recommend any, please do, so.
Full consideration of the board. Yeah.
I asked one of our outside councils that we work with to provide a list of firms that we do not currently have a relationship with, but have this specialty, and so I think we as a board look at those and any others you bring to the table and discuss which one may be the best.
Do you want to distribute those to all of us that?
Yes, why don't you send me the ones you have in mind? I'll add that, and then I'll send that to everyone.
Fine.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order today? If not, I do have one announcement. We have time to make it to this. So Dr. Antoinette Miranda, who's a member of the State Board of Education, will be at CAUS, Columbus Alternative High School, today at 12:30. She is presenting CAUS with the State Momentum Award for Exceeding Expectations for the 2017 school year. So I'm headed over there. This is a very exciting thing for CAUS and for the districts. I hope to see you all there at 12:30. Bring the news cameras too, because this will be a very newsworthy event. Ms. Gibbs?
And, back by popular demand, Eastmore Academy will perform two encore performances of The Color Purple tonight and tomorrow night. It is an excellent production, and you can call the school to get tickets. It is an amazing show, and so if you did not get a chance to see it during the regular run, back by popular demand, they have demanded an encore. So tonight and tomorrow night, you can go to Eastmore Academy High School to see that production.
And there is a motion to adjourn, and is there a second? Moved and seconded. Mr. Treasurer?
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Peretti?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Cole?
Yes.
That motion carried.
We stand adjourned. I thank you, colleagues.